I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Municipal School Committee to order. Sorry if I'm not here.
No tablet, I do.
Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of March 21st as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the budget hearing minutes of March 21st as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the budget hearing minutes of March 28th as presented.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we did the 21st twice as well.
Oh, we didn't vote for the 21st yet.
Okay, so we're on the 28th, we're looking at those second minutes. We have a second. Any discussion? We've had those in our email packets. No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And we have one abstention. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the meeting minutes of April 10th as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve and sign the bills and payroll as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you for those minutes, Susan. Okay, we have student representatives. Thank you. James. Come on down, James. Thank you.
The school musical was a very good success.
Oh, would you just start introducing yourself in case there's somebody new in the audience.
I'm James Fool. I'm a sophomore.
Thank you, James.
So, the school musical was a good success. MCAS has been done for the 10th graders. The sophomore team has been performing well in their games as spring sports have been able to get started because of the good weather. The marching band has spring parades coming up and the band prepares for the spring concert. And the students filled out their getting, or starting to get ready for the AP tests coming up in the following weeks and we just filled out the pre-registration stuff for the AP tests. That's about it. Everything's been going pretty swell.
Thank you. And you're still enjoying the seniors? As a sophomore, you're enjoying the seniors as they mark their time?
Yes. On the final stretch.
Soon, soon.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
You know, when's the concert?
Concert? I'm not sure.
I believe it's May, right? Tuesday?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the middle school concert is the Tuesday, Thursday before? The week, the week before, I think, on the Thursday.
Thank you, James, for that reporting again. Oh, we have Principal Vassal with a NEAS report. Come on down. Don't fall.
Feels like the hot seat. If I may, through the chair, before we start with the NEAS report, I'd just like to take a minute to mention about the program that we had today. We had a guest speaker, Mike Donahue, with the program. His company is called Value Up and he spent the day with us today. He did three general assemblies for grades five through 12 and then we had three breakout sessions for smaller groups, students that were identified that would benefit from smaller group working with Mr. Donahue in grades seven through 12. And I think it was a very successful day. And so, we were all really pleased with it. We feel like that there's going to be quite a bit of benefit still to come from, you know, activities that happened today. I know for a fact, we had three students who actually went to the counselors to talk about some things that came up through this today. So, it was, it was pretty powerful. And we got a lot of really good feedback and then Mr. Donahue met with the high school teachers at the end of the day. So, just wanted to share that we did it, it went really well today.
So, you do have student feedback?
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Vanclet is actually going to do a Google survey to share with all of our students and get some actual comments and get some feedback from them on what they think. Because we'd like to try to maybe bring him back sometime next year as a follow-up to what took place today.
And would the counselors have access to him throughout that time period?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, so we, we went for the full program and what that did was he was with us all day today. He has a book called Value Up and it's about his whole program. In a nutshell, so to speak, his program is about teaching students to value themselves because if they value themselves, they start to value others in just changing the culture within the building. A lot of it has to do with bullying and bullying prevention, that if you're valuing other people around you, you're less likely to do that. We had a really nice conversation this afternoon with the teachers on how doing this starts to empower students to be able to speak up and tell other students that their behavior isn't appropriate for our school. And that's something that we're, we're really working towards. He, his company is working on some video presentations to follow up with this message that because the program that we purchased with him today, we will be getting those video presentations whenever they're done. So, we will be able to use those throughout the school year next year. And he's also giving us copies of his book and the students are all going to get a link where they can do a free download of his book. So, we got quite a bit from this and we all felt like that it went really well. Our counselors and Mr. Vanclet and I were, really felt good about it at the end of the day. So, I just wanted to share that with you.
Do we have some outreach to parents regarding this? Are parents able to interact at all?
We certainly can. We can also, we can certainly share the link with them also on the, on his book. Like I said, it's free to us to use. So, we could absolutely put it out for parents and I think that there, some parents would probably definitely take advantage of it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you for, for those opportunities.
Yeah, it was good today. So, NEAS. What can I tell you? What would you like to know?
I don't know, all that hard work that went into it should, should yield something.
So, I'll just go ahead and start and then if you have questions, please feel free to ask. We did finally get our rough draft of our final report. We aren't really at liberty at this time to make that public yet. We have met with our co-chairs and our standard chairs. We all met with the chairperson of the visiting team and he came in and we went over some of the comments in the rough draft. There were some things that we felt like were inconsistencies and so, this is our opportunity to say, I'm not sure that you really got this right. So, we've already provided some notes on that and they're making some of those changes in the rough draft. I have a call in, actually doing a conference call with our liaison with the NEAS organization tomorrow, kind of off a little bit because of the vacation last week, to kind of clarify a couple of other questions that we have that we, there was a couple of things we were like, ah, not sure that that really came out, like how we represented it whenever they visited. So, this is our opportunity to clarify those comments. And then, once I, we have finished that, we'll be finalizing our notes to NEAS, they'll finalize their report and then send it to us and then at that point, we'll be able to make it public. What I can tell you though, kind of overarching, some of the commendations that were made whenever the visiting team left and have also shown up in our rough draft is they were very pleased with our core values and the redesign of the placards that we had done or that the faculty had done. Use of technology was something that they specifically pinpointed and we're real happy to hear that, you know, we are planning to, you know, build on that for what we have now. Use of the weekly planners, which I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Jazinski because I understand he's the one that put that in place. They specifically mentioned that they felt like that the, the use of the weekly planners that our students get every week helps students with their own personal responsibility as far as the ownership of their own educational process. And we've spent, I think our teachers have done a really good job this year of emphasizing that with students, that a lot of the education, it's their responsibility too. We have a lot as educators, but it's on the students as well. They also were very complimentary about the safe and positive environment of our school. So, we all felt very proud of that. They specifically mentioned that they liked how our faculty embraced our school and that they really felt like that they took ownership of our school and that they really cared about our students. So, I was real happy that that, that came through. Couple of, some recommendations were pretty much what we already knew and we've already talked with you about were, you know, communication, you know, and being able to have better communication, particularly communication with our parents, alignment of curriculum and curriculum mapping, which of course, we're, we are working on, and a formal process for the use of data to inform instruction. So, those are just some overarching things that we all knew we needed to work on. We actually identified that for them before they even came in. And so, they kind of have given us a little bit better feedback and given some suggestions on what we need to do going forward in that process.
Wow, wonderful. Lots of positives there.
A lot of really good positives. We were really pleased with it and I think our faculty did a nice job and, and our students too, because the team spent a lot of time with some of our students and they spoke very highly of our students and our student escorts and the fact that, you know, we try to make sure that we're full inclusive and including our at-risk students and our special needs students. We actually, we had our, our, we had Desiree and Allison and Genesis actually helping out with escorting on one of the days. And so, they, they thought that that was really great and we did that specifically, not to like, oh, let me show off a little bit, but they, they are included. And they're always included in the things that go on in the school. So, we wanted to make sure that they saw that as well.
Yes, it's wonderful for our community to have this ownership and responsibility shared by all and highlighting that. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. I, I thought it went really well. So, we're pleased with it. We have a lot of work to do. Don't get me wrong, we have a lot of work to do.
I understand, that's the beginning, yes.
But it is, it is work that has begun and it's one of the things that we specifically mentioned with our follow-up visit with the chairperson of the visiting team is that a lot of the things that they've already mentioned are things that we've actually already started this school year.
Wonderful. Dr. Casman, do you have anything you want to add?
You know, we went to the outbrief and again, as Ms. Vassal just said, nothing, nothing surprised us. There was no surprises. What, you know, what was nice to hear was about the culture and just how supportive and positive that it was. And, you know, our surveys bear, you know, more that out, you know, during the year for law-free stakeholder groups and, you know, the other stuff, it's done, right? It's fixed.
Right.
And, but the important stuff is culture, that's not easily fixed and it's not easily earned.
Right.
It's not easily won. So, those are the, those are the positives we take away, but as Peggy said, we have, we have a lot of work to do, but it is what it is. But the important things were highlighted as exemplars and that's, and I think that's a credit just to everyone.
Right. You can't build if you don't have the foundation and that's what the foundation...
Exactly, exactly. And I, I think that the positive, the real positive for us and our faculty is that our faculty knows that we have work to do. And so, for the most part, you know, they're embracing that also and quite a few of the faculty members have volunteered extra hours already to help out with that. So, I think that that speaks well for our school community.
Thank you, yes.
I think that's exciting that you have work to do because it keeps the job interesting and it keeps us moving forward and growing. And so, good. Kudos. Absolutely. And with that in mind, I have to tell you, we've actually had students, so I know you're familiar with the Peer Power Program. We kind of intentionally let it go the last couple of years because we felt like it needed to be revamped and it, you know, needed to be redesigned for what it was and the purpose of it. And we've actually had students stepping up and saying, we'd like to help out with that.
Great.
And that's the kind of thing that we want to see. We want to see that our students are stepping up and saying, we want to be part of this. And so, we're starting to see that. So, it's, it's good. It's a real positive for us.
Thank you. It's a positive for all, actually. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to say, and please extend our thanks to everyone on the team. It's a lot of work and to see this through, its fruition, which doesn't end with the report.
Yes.
You have a lot more to do. So, thank them in advance.
Absolutely.
Because it's hard, it's, it's tough work sometimes because you're, you're looking at things that you've always done and it's sometimes a hard discussion. So, we commend them and yourself and the entire team.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll see you again, I'm sure.
I'll be back again. Thank you.
Look forward to it. All right. On ongoing business on our agenda, we have the District Reorganization Community Forum. Okay, I guess I'm anxious. But we'll let Mrs. Geister do hers as well.
There, there's nothing unusual on this one before and I just want to say that this is the first year in quite a few years that we haven't implemented a budget freeze, which I think the principals probably would be happy about that.
Right.
Our bottom line is doing really well and at this moment in time, it looks like we are going to make our first payment to our OED.
Nice.
I don't want to talk too much, but...
Sounds like crazy.
Yes, Mrs. Hughes.
And looking at these numbers and seeing that, you know, we seem to be fiscally in good shape, I was wondering if maybe we need to reconvene a finance subcommittee meeting to kind of talk about where we are, discuss the challenges of the upcoming year and just kind of take these numbers and discuss, you know, what, what can we do this year that might help next year and things like that? So, if we maybe wanted to get a meeting together.
Right. And I think we want to, you know, be clear on what good shape means so that, you know, it isn't misleading after all the money that we've expended out of school choice this year. So, we're on budget. We're on budget, yes. Basically, what we're saying, we have...
We're on budget, yes.
Right. Because that's always the fear when you've used the money, that, that something would happen and you'd be in deficit. So, being on budget is, is a good thing. And yes, we have to wait till June because we don't know what could happen between now and June, yes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mrs. Geister. Next topic is the District Reorganization Community Forum, which happened last night. And this is on the agenda to sort of debrief and have school committee comment, basically on what, what we heard last night.
I don't think anyone liked it. It's not what we heard last night.
Yes.
It kind of felt like I stepped into a ant nest and got stung by an older ant. Very uncomfortable. Yeah, I, I kind of feel like my thoughts are that it should be left alone the way that it was originally voted, the way when Templeton originally went to go, fill, fill the school. That's Templeton students would go up Templeton, Phillips and go back to Phillips and...
I will say, I think it's, it's a good process that we went through and that's the way we should do things, back and forth and future.
And if, if the school committee doesn't do things such as this, then you don't have anything proactive. Some things were discovered and we have a new plan to move forward because of these hard discussions. As Dr. Casman always says, it certainly isn't pleasant, but without it, and we keep, we just keep moving from day to day without looking to the future, then that's not our job. I think what was, what was obvious was that there wasn't one person in the community that stood up in favor of the alternative plan. So, that spoke volumes. But what's obvious to me was that we did not have a representation of parents, of parents of four students who are currently enrolled in these grades that we were talking about. We didn't, at some points, we didn't even have grandparents. They were older than us. So, what I'm saying is, I don't know that we had a representation of the communities. I believe that we didn't hear from people who have students in second grades and third grades from both communities. And that, that was important to me because I didn't feel like I was hearing about students' education in a few cases. That was the case. In other cases, it appeared to be a rehash of histories from both towns and going back 15, 25, 30 years. And that wasn't what I was looking for, for information. So, it is what it is, but I didn't get the kind of information I would have hoped to have gotten. And, and having said that, it's also a sad scenario, what I heard. Makes me very sad because I am proud of Templeton and Phillips and in the district I represent and I would hope that the parents would feel that way about all the children in this community. And that didn't come through last night. Mrs. Hughes.
First, I'd just like to say, I want to once again recognize the work that was done by the District Reorganization Advisory Committee and thank them for the participation in discussions that have proven to be very politically charged. When the school committee first commissioned this advisory committee, we asked them to look at the configuration of our district, what the impact, the opening of the new elementary school in Templeton would have on our district and what other opportunities might become available to the district to help us maximize the educational experience of our students. And while the advisory committee did those things and presented the school committee with the information on not only the issues that would arise from moving forward originally as planned, but they also vetted out other potential options and identified the potential opportunity that could increase our educational effectiveness, it quickly became clear over the past several weeks, to me anyway, that there was much work needed between our two school communities and that needs to take place before we can begin to seriously entertain any ideas of additional integration between the two towns. As school committee members, I feel safe for speaking for everybody, we take our position as the governing board of the town's public school systems very seriously. By law, although we function as a duly-elected committee of town government, the school committee has, unlike other town boards, autonomous and absolute authority within limitations established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to carry out the educational policies of the state and guide the education process. An important part of this role is to ensure that the wishes and needs of the public are heard and factored into any decisions that we make. We state very clearly in our policy manual that the voices of our community members will be heard and factored into those decisions, which is why we created the advisory committee and then scheduled that community forum to let people know that the information that was being shared with us from the committee, what it was, and to get their feedback on it. With all that being said, after listening to the input from our community members last night, as well as hearing from many community members that couldn't be there, that reached out to me personally, I feel we need to put this issue to bed sooner rather than later to alleviate the angst that has surfaced, especially as evidenced last night at our community forum. So, I would like to motion that any further discussions about potential changes to the district organization structure outside of the ones that are scheduled to occur once the new elementary school in Templeton has been completed be tabled and we move forward as a school committee to ensure the transition to the new elementary school, which includes moving the fifth grade classrooms back to their respective elementary schools and provides for the district-wide preschool program to be housed at the new Templeton Center Elementary School that was planned for and executed to ensure we continue to provide the high level of educational services that our district is known for.
Second.
Madam Chairman, could I see that? Could I see that, please?
What she just read?
I can't hear a word you're saying.
Oh, there you go, Dan.
Sorry, Dan.
Thank you.
I should say the motion on the table is to stick with the original plan.
Okay.
Read the last paragraph, I'll tell you the motion.
And it was seconded. Do we have any other discussion?
Just on the, for the motion that's on the floor.
The motion on the floor is to stick with the original plan. That plan is that the Templeton School will be pre-K through K, Templeton, Phillips, K through five, and Phillipston will be K through five.
And all preschool goes to Templeton.
That is the plan, as it was presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to have that entered in as part of our minutes?
Yeah, I will too. We'll share. Actually, Dan wants to pass that copy down to Ms. Barney.
She'll get a second.
She can have that.
Says something else?
She's going to give that, you're going to give that to Mrs. Barney as part of our record. So, it'll be public information.
Thank you.
And we have the comments that we made. Are we...
She's awfully worried.
We already passed it. We've already...
I didn't know if I had it. Okay.
We did. And we did vote.
Can you pass that down?
I like it.
Thank you. All right, we're looking for public input now. Anybody who has some information they'd like to share?
Sure, I will.
Yes.
Just wanted to give you an update.
This is Mrs. Lyons.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Our woman behind the camera.
Yes, the wizard, the wizard.
Mr. President, I just wanted to let you know the band went to New York City organization. They had three dates down there. It was fantastic. They went to the, drove past, drove, uh, drove past the Statue of Liberty to, on their way to Ellis Island. They see the 9/11 memorial. They ate dinner in Chinatown. They got to work with the Broadway and the Picknick after. They learned peace from beginning to end and they went to perform with the Broadway Center, which was fantastic. Then, towards the end of the trip, we were supposed to perform in the atrium that's attached to Trump Tower, but due to the recent fire scare up in Trump Tower, they moved us and we were actually in Trump Tower in the, in their cafeteria section and they had to play in there for the National Public of New York and it was, sounded amazing. You can find all that footage on the Narragansett Music, Warrior Music Facebook page if you want to check it out. There's pictures of the kids. They had a fantastic time. Let's see what else. This weekend also, we have seven students from the band participating in the Williams Club offstage.
Thank you very much.
And we have one middle school student participating in the Central Mass District's performance, my son.
Well, that sounds exciting, yeah. Nice opportunity to afford these students. That's wonderful.
It was, it was a great, great trip and they had an incredible time.
Thank you. Do I have any public input? NDA input. Mrs. Parker, come on down. Come on down.
I just want to be on camera.
Come on down, girl.
So, no, just getting back from vacation, having a little bit of spring weather and then not spring weather again. Just elementary school, grade three and four and grade five and six are in the middle of their ELA MCAS. And from what I've seen and from what I've witnessed, I'm actually giving a test to a fourth grader. It seems like things are running very smoothly. I think our tech department did a fantastic job getting everybody all set up and to take the test. No glitches that I've seen or heard of, so it's, that's all going well. And then we're just going to move forward and get through this and then prepare for Math MCAs coming up in, in May. But everybody seems to be ready to get back at it. I think break was a good thing. People are refreshed. That's it. Anything for me? Anybody have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other school committee comments?
I have a school committee comment.
You may, Mrs....
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Hughes for drafting that letter and for making that motion. I really appreciate having not been able to go last night. Thank you very much.
I think, I don't think we've had a school committee meeting since Legally Blonde, have we?
No.
It was fabulous. It was a really good production. I enjoyed it.
It was fun. It was fun and fun.
It was. And we have some talented kids.
Yeah, they did a great job.
We have some very talented kids in our district.
And they had so much fun doing it. That was what struck me. They were smiling the whole time they were performing. It was still great to see.
They had so much fun. They had so much fun with that show. It was just so magnificent. And it took them ten, ten-four minutes. And the jump rope scene alone.
Oh, my God.
No, it was great.
It was fun to watch.
Please send along, I thought I'll speak for the committee, our congratulations to the entire team of the musicals. It really, it always impresses me when I think of how small, any of the music events that I go to, the quality that we always come out with, with, really, we're, we're on, you know, the shoestring budget, if you will, for human resources. And, and we get these kids to come out and they, every time, be at the band, the musical, the theater, it's amazing.
Yeah, it's a miracle, every year. It really does. And in the end, it all comes together and it's beautiful, and they just work so hard, and we just, I mean.
And the dogs were adorable, too.
Oh, yeah. So, congratulations to everyone.
Yeah. It was great.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Mason looks like he's ready to, he loves that. Okay, we'll move on. Mrs. Hughes, will you introduce the next item?
Sure. The next item under new business is the superintendent contract negotiations. As per our current contract with our superintendent, the superintendent shall be employed from July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2019. The committee will, prior to June 30th of 2018, so this current year, vote whether or not to enter into negotiations for a new or extended contract with the superintendent. The superintendent shall notify the committee chair no later than April 1st, 2018, of the above referenced provision, because I laugh at that, because obviously we can't be trusted to keep him on top of things. We ask the superintendent to do so for us. The failure of the committee to vote prior to June 30th shall not be construed as a rollover or an extension of the contract, and no event shall the non-renewal of the superintendent's contract be considered termination of the same. If the committee does not notify the superintendent at least twelve months prior to the stated expiration date that it does not intend to renew this agreement or enter into negotiations for a new or extended contract, it shall be renewed for a one-year period. So, Dr. Kazivan did send us our notification at the end of March saying, hey, it's before April 1st. You guys need to take action. And I believe he also indicated that he'd probably be interested in sticking around. So, we really need to entertain a motion from someone to enter into negotiations, and it should be specific enough to say for either new or extended, or someone could motion to decide not to negotiate for a new contract. So, somebody should make a motion to do so. And then the other part I would add to a motion would be delegation of the negotiation to either a subcommittee or certain members to perform so that it can be done offline and be brought back to the committee.
I'll make a motion to enter into negotiations with Dr. Kazivan for a new or extended, I don't have to say one or the other, right? A new or extended contract.
And do you want to delegate a certain committee or two people to do it?
Delegate.
And bring it back to the full committee, of course.
Okay, yes. Delegation of this negotiation is made to have two people enter into it? Do I have to name the two people? Margaret?
You could say chair and vice chair.
Chair and vice chair?
I don't know.
So, there's a motion on the floor to enter into negotiations with Dr. Constan, Kaziv, Kazivan.
Who?
Contract, Kaziv, coming out at once, Dr. Kazivan, for a new or extended contract, and delegation of the negotiation will be made to the chair and vice chair, to then to be brought back to the full committee. Do I have a second on that?
You do. I have a second.
And discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, staying, so we have unanimous.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Yes. All right, we have, we have Dr. Cushing here to talk about an eighth grade trip. Would you come on down, please?
You'll have that page with that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
So, this trip was instituted last year as something for those students who are not traveling to Washington, D.C. As you know, the cost of the Washington, D.C. trip, while definitely in check compared to other school districts around, we have, we've put in various activities for students to stay behind. And this is kind of a culmination of that week for these students. It's about fifty dollars for students to go to, go to Kennedy Lake Park, which is in New Hampshire and is over state lines. They will be participating in educational activities while they are there, but it is also, to be honest, a fun trip as well.
I believe seniors have done that as part of physics experience, so, and they, they were allowed to have fun, too.
And, I mean, what's good is, they actually have, when I was in high school, we did it as physics, but they've actually expanded to make the packets more, more accessible to younger students as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the field, the out-of-state field trip for the grade eight students who will not be attending the Washington, D.C. trip. As for them.
Just a question, as always, you said it was fifty dollars?
About, approximately.
As always, no one's excluded if finance is an issue.
No, no. We do, I mean, we do try to fundraise. I was actually going to be asking if I can put out a message to Dr. Kazivan. Our scholarship fund is definitely taking a hit this year. The need on the ecology school field trip in Washington, D.C. is outstripping. Several parents have reached out that they are unable to, to come up with the full, full fee. So, you know, we'll be getting donations from certain businesses that we get on an annual basis, but, you know, the Phillipston, I do want to publicly recognize Phillipston Congregational Church. I would like to also reach out to the other churches in town. Phillipston Congregational donated over five hundred dollars from a Sunday collection that they did. So, that's, we're really grateful for that, and they've done that for several years. And they do not designate, when I found this, they do not designate, whether it's a Templeton or Phillipston resident, they say for us to make the decision of the best, the most in need. And I find that to be really great. So, I am going to be putting a call out to see if we can do this, because it directly supports students, and we want to make sure that they have these opportunities.
Yes, I know that we've always, you know, found a way.
We have, we have.
For those students to attend, so I thank you.
And, and, and this isn't directly related to this trip. I do wonder what, what kind of turnout do we have for the D.C. trip? I get concerned, because as, as an eighth grade parent, it's a lot of money.
It is.
And it's significantly, I feel, gone up in two years since the last time they paid for it. And I get concerned, you know, hearing that there is greater need, you know, at what point do we really have to look at? How do we either figure out better ways to make it more affordable through increased fundraising, which I bite my tongue because no one wants to do that? You know, but how, what do we, what can we do for these kids?
So, we, one of the things, one of the things that has caused the cost to go up this year in particular, federal transportation regulations changed, and so just our location, if, if we were Auburn, all right, just as an example, with their proximity to the Mass Pike, they can travel to Washington, D.C. and back with one bus driver, per bus. Unfortunately, now, a person has to meet us, a Wilson driver has to meet us about halfway down or ride the bus halfway down, and then the driver has to drive back, okay? Because we are, I forget the exact regulations and times, it's around ten hours of driving, we're just slightly over that. And it's not from the time that they leave Narragansett, because I brought up, well, maybe we change the, the drop-off location to be not Narragansett, but the Whitney Field Mall, as crazy as that sounds. But if it's parents driving, something like that, to be able to, to alleviate that cost of having, now we have to have four drivers for two buses, all right? And it's all safety regs. So, those are definitely the concerns that, that we have to face. And it's definitely something that will be, we continually look at. We do have seventy-three students right now, on the cusp of seventy-four students out of a grade of about a hundred and twenty students. So, it is a high percentage, and that number has been, I would say, fairly static over my time here without having the exact numbers in front of me.
I mean, I know it's, it's a fabulous trip, and I hate to see us not be able to continue because of the money factor. It's unfortunate, you know, I, I get the safety and stuff, and we want that for the kids. It's just unfortunate that it's.
I think Mrs. Kojel, though, could speak to the fact that when, for maybe more years, they went to Boston, maybe there could be a New York option, maybe there could be other things. I mean, going to the nation's capital, though, having been on the trip numerous times, really has been exceptional for students. But, you know, there are other options.
But it's a great trip for the eighth graders.
It is, it is.
And there are so many memories, and for so many of those students, they're never going to get there.
That's the point.
And so, selfishly, we started with the junior class. Sorry to speak so much, but.
Right, James?
We, we added the New York trip, the New York portion of it, that I know it helped, it contributes us to getting back a little bit later on that Friday night, but the power, anyone who's been to Ground Zero and the monuments, all that, I think, just really is important for our students to see.
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering, I'm sure we've already put deposits down, I'm sure that this year is pretty much a done deal, but just a quick math, if, if we literally took two first-student buses, literally transported them to wherever, Auburn, the Whitney Mall, and literally, it'd be a bus draw, it'd be a bus hop from one bus to the other. There'd be no parents or anything needed for that. That, we're roughly talking about, to Whitney, I can't imagine it's more than three hundred bucks.
Well, you'd have to find out what will alleviate that.
Right, right.
Luggage and stuff, all the things that they put up.
You'd be two buses, two of those buses to get, the Wilson buses, one, sorry.
I think, I think one of the issues was, it's, it's the driver time from Wilson to wherever. So, unfortunately, from what I've been told, the clock doesn't start when they're here, the clock starts when they leave the bus depot. And so, maybe, you know, I like the idea, though. I do like the idea.
Well, there's some things we can look at, Mrs. Lyons.
My husband's a truck driver, so he has to follow very similar regulations, might be a little different in terms of passengers, but being a truck driver, he's only allowed to drive for eleven hours a day, and he's allowed to work fourteen, not behind, those added hours are not behind the wheel. So, if they're very similar in federal regulations, because he would just need a passenger attachment to be able to drive a bus, then that's, yeah, then we're very restricted, and it's all computerized now, and, yeah.
Okay, right. So, things to look at, but.
Absolutely.
But, yes.
I would like to.
We have a second. Second, we need a vote. You, Mr. Cushing.
I, I could, what, couldn't we look into a bus lane that is closer to Lemonster or something, instead of using Wilson? And then using our bus lane to get to the other?
One of the things, one of the other things, too, as you mentioned that, one of the things that, so the way the trip works is, we go through Wilson, Wilson uses a travel agency called Mid-Atlantic, that, that really books, I mean, they're, they're kind of like the go-to. And one of the things that I think that we might be able to really save on, because everything in Washington, D.C. is free, the Smithsonian's, the Capitol, all those types of things are free. And so, I, I started collecting business cards on the last trip I was at from the various restaurants, who, when they were telling, when we were talking about costs, they're like, huh, they're upcharging us, which, it's a business, I get it, people need to make money. But I'm, I'm almost wondering if we would have, if we were to really put together our, our collective energies, would there be a way that we could almost do these things ourselves, as, you know, almost book it ourselves? That's something that I really want to look into this summer, and that might be a steep climb, but I spoke to Mr. Hannular about that just the other day, because I am concerned about the cost, all right? Now, that being said, other districts around us are paying more, all right? I haven't looked at the numbers this year, but in past years, it was up to two hundred dollars more for a similar trip. So, I, I do want to know that, I think that the, the cost, the cost is being kept tight, but I also want to find ways to really try to maximize what we can do for our kids. And if we can contact restaurants and book things ourselves, we might be able to, we might be able to do things a little bit better.
Yes, that would take some discussion, too, because you've always got the protection of the bus company when something goes wrong, and they call in people.
As if, they had one year where they went out and got pizza because there was a problem.
Right. People in the area support all these companies, so, great thing to look at.
We just happen to have, in residence, a, a frugal traveler, and so, we're whispering back and forth, but being very serious, we won't discuss it now. But I think that that's a good point. I think we should look at, this year might be a Washington, D.C.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we have some options that.
Create your own itinerary, yes.
And I think that, given all of that, let's, let's definitely try that next year. We'll start early, I think it's great again.
Well, thank you for organizing this opportunity for our students. As Mrs. Kojel said, there are many people in this community, it's the only time they've been to Washington.
Right. And I mean, I gotta be, I gotta be honest with you, Mrs. Kojel went a couple of years ago when my daughter was born, and then she went with her granddaughter last year, I believe. And, you know, I, I want to thank her publicly for that. I've never done that, to my recollection.
My pleasure, Mr. Cushing.
Say again?
My pleasure.
But I also want to say that I think it's really important, and I invite any of you to come with us sometime, to, to really see the power of this trip, and to see what Mr. Hannular and the other eighth grade teachers really do, to wrangle and herd members of our eighth grade class at times.
And chaffers.
That's what, yes.
Mr. Cushing.
This as well.
Can we finish the last? No, we will now, thank you. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have a superintendent's report, Dr. Kazivan.
Okay, so, first on the list, I sent this all via email, I don't know if you have the papers, but this, the elementary assistant principal job description draft, it has certainly been vetted by Kate and both elementary principals. We're not going to, we're not going to lie, we did not create this from, from the ashes. We borrowed it, maybe from a district or two, but certainly, this, this meets our needs, and it's for, and, and the reason why we want to post this position as soon as possible, given the fact that it's that, it's that time of the year to, to approach a looking for jobs, and we want to have the best, best chance at it.
Okay, is the, is the first time you've seen this description, the job description?
No, it's all in the email, like you said, I read.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to motion that we approve the elementary assistant principal job description as presented.
Seconded. Discussion?
Just to clarify, the hire date isn't until next year?
July 1st.
Of this year?
Yep.
To the FY, right, July 1st, coming.
Okay.
July 1st, 2018.
Because they will be housed in Baldurville.
Yes. Between Baldurville and Templeton Center.
Baldurville and Templeton Center. Baldurville and Templeton Center this coming year.
So, they'll share.
School year. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Madam Chair, when I was young, full of energy, which seemed so long ago, we decided to take on the logo, which, which in much respects was an incredibly foolish thing to do, given how busy the year was. But, is any good thing, you have a great committee, and we had a, and I'm not saying it's Dr. Cushing's or my committee, and Lyons, I'm trying to think, Nick Vassal, John.
Barry.
Barry.
I was in the beginning.
Denise Bolt and the Castle Thousands, they were wonderful. This took a long time. As you know, the, the survey, clearly, although it was a lot closer than people thought, whether it be the N or the, or the traditional borderhead, but in the end, borderhead did prevail. And so, after many, 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 and many iterations and changes, et cetera, what you have before you, when you're at it, and if, you know, you caught it last night, it was, we kind of, we kind of teased it, it was in the PowerPoint, we thought we could do that. Clearly, you might look at this and go, look, I don't, what's the difference, what took you so long? It, it took a long time, because the, well, it depends on what article of clothing you look on, they're not the same. What this is about is having a uniform-
Consistency.
-pun intended, logo that will be, in fact, copyrighted, to an extent, that, so once it's approved, this, our next step will be to make sure that the athletic director, et cetera, will make sure that this is the logo. And that way, whenever we, we'll have this professionally saved, colors will actually, so what kind of blue, this is, it's a, believe it or not, I had no idea, it's a big deal, but once we get all of that figured out, this will be the only logo that we, that we will use as an ergansin. So, but it was a lot of work, and I'm laughing, it was a lot of fun work, actually, throughout. But, but before you is the voted on and approved logo from the logo committee for your vote approval.
I make a motion that we accept the logo? Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Hughes.
I would just like to amend it that we accept the logo and ask Dr. Casman to send a huge thank you note to that committee for the blood, sweat and tears over the, the logo.
Thank you.
We're laughing, so there was a lot of-
I'll second the amended motion.
Right, we have a second on an amended motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to make the assumption-
Yes, we are going to skip over the district reorganization survey. On the motion, there will be none.
That must really hurt you.
I have, yeah.
I'm not going to be able to do another survey.
Um, yes, it does. But I will say, just as a very quick summary, I want to thank the reorganization committee that did so last night, obviously, but I want to say again, in the forum, the reorganization committee did a fantastic job. They did exactly what was charged, they did so with open mind, and I have to tell you, it gives you, it does, it gives you hope that we can have difficult conversations and still walk out of room, you know, and, so, I want to thank them publicly, they did a fantastic job, and I agree with Mr. Mason, this process of, of vetting these type of things in these type of forums, I think, is a great process. We learned a lot, we absolutely learned a ton about a lot of different things, and so, but thank you.
Some things I didn't want to know.
I'm sorry.
Oh, but I did learn, you did. All right, do we have thank yous going to the district reorg as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In written form, great.
That Susan smiles, all right.
Thank you, Mrs. Barney.
Secretary takes it.
Curriculum instruction goes to Mrs. Colley. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. So I have a few things to report since we last were together. One is that our secondary, grade five through 12, English curriculum writing is progressing, the team is meeting weekly, making really good progress, having some really excellent discussions about our English curriculum in the middle and the high school. We have two committees starting up in May, related to our district improvement plan, so work on the objectives of our district improvement plan is underway, and those two committees are the professional development committee and an instructional practices committee. That work will take place, each committee will meet three times, and they're comprised of a combination of teachers and administrators, so we get feedback from different constituents and related to the district improvement plan. So on the professional development committee, which will meet May 22nd, 29th, and June 5th, there's three administrators and six teachers, that committee will look at our professional development for next year and make sure that it's aligned to our district and school improvement goals, so that we have a through line for our work. We're going to have an instructional practices committee that looks at what might some research-based instructional practices be that we want to focus on, that committee will meet on May 17th, 24th, and 31st. We have four administrators and eight teachers on that committee, so those should be really good discussions around those two items to move the work of our district improvement plan forward. We have our last full professional development day coming up in just about a week, I think, right, May 7th? We have lots of, I think we have up to maybe eight different things, you know, because we have so many different constituents of people that we're making sure that we're attending to, but three big pieces there are that the social emotional learning book study will wrap up, I think it'll be session four of four, or five of five, it's the last session. That's a, also a grade five through 12 group, Mrs. Vassal and Mr. Cushing have been spearheading that, where completing our pre-K to four English curriculum work, professional development work, where we have, as a team, I'm really proud of the work that the teachers in pre-K to four have done, they've taken writing samples three times this year, they will do a fourth one, so we'll have four writing samples from pre-K to four, and they've sorted them and created rubrics, and so we have exemplars at each proficiency point, which is really an amazing body of work that they've done, so we're going to wrap that up. And we'll finish up some work that we began with elementary previously, on, in May, on May 7th, the middle and high school will unpack our district improvement plan that you all voted on and is posted on our website, and do some activities around aligning their school improvement plans at the middle and high school with the district improvement plan. So as of that May date, all staff members will have had an opportunity to process the district improvement plan, learn about it, ask questions, look at their school improvement plans, and see where there's alignment, and maybe some refinements that they might want to make. So that's really a nice way to end the year with that work. We have Footsteps to Brilliance, which you might remember is a reading program that we received, Dr. Casman brought our attention to it, and we received some, there was grant funding through United Way and so forth, so we got a greatly discounted rate to become part of this. And we're part of the first ever nationally innovation zone of 10 districts that are participating in launching this Footsteps to Brilliance literacy for young children and students, and it includes, obviously, those, you know, one, two, three, four-year-olds who aren't even in our school system yet, up to third grade, and it's free to them. The point is that if we can get students reading at grade level by grade three, that's a tremendous accomplishment for them, and really improves their chances of successful academic career moving forward. So that Footsteps to Brilliance process is, there's going to be a press conference on May 24th at Fitchburg High School from 10 to 12, you're all invited, if you haven't received an invitation.
I was just going to say, it came today, around two o'clock, from Superintendent Kenkenworthy to your school, because I almost just waited until-
Yeah, it's like a, it's an electronic invitation, and you click yes, they would like each of the 10 districts to have, you know, a, a body of representation at the press conference, to really kind of launch with a bang and, and promote this effort. So you're all invited to that, if you need any details, or you didn't get an email, contact me, and I'll make sure to. Along with that, we had pre-K through four teachers, it's really a pre-K to three program, but we will have some students who are in grade four, who could benefit from grade three materials. So we had pre-K through four teachers trained on April 13th, so that, you know, they are fully aware of the program, it's not going to be announced without, you know, them being completely a part of it, and they had training on how to use it and so forth, in their classrooms, and how to get, we, we had our tech department, who was wonderful, get all of our current students in those grades enrolled, and, so teachers are really up to speed on that, and with MCAS, you know, it's only been about five or six teaching days since then, believe it or not, because of vacation. So, you know, they will be starting to experiment with it in the classrooms, the expectation really isn't that they're going to, you know, fully engage in this program this year, but they will spend the rest of the year using it in groups and kind of familiarizing themselves so that they can get up and running with it next year. And the last piece I wanted to mention is that our second district objective is, I was trying to think of what to call it, I think it's, we call them district objectives, is around an intervention system for academic support for students who are struggling, and we're moving forward with that, we had an admin training so that we all got on the same page, and on May 7th, we're going to have a training for all staff, so that everyone is speaking the same language, and everyone understands what intervention services are, and then we have a planning group happening in the next couple of weeks of administrators to take some next steps with that. So a lot of good stuff happening.
Great.
Just a question, I was just looking at that email I got, it says Tuesday, May 24th, but that's a Thursday, May 24th?
Oh, it's definitely May 24th.
Definitely the Thursday, so that email came out wrong.
Oh, boy.
I guess I had a question on summer instruction, and how, number one, what type of summer
instruction will happen in this district? And then number two is how we're accessing that footprints program for the K, the one through four-year-olds?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So we've involved Mackenzie Lyons, who's our before and after-school program coordinator in this work, we had like a strategic implementation meeting, and she's going to use it in her before and after-school program, and she's also kind of a little bit of outreach for us, because she sees parents who come in with other young students, children, and so forth, so that's one way, we reached out to the librarian for Phillipsden and Templeton, and there's a summer component of this program that Mackenzie was saying that could be used in their summer program. Now, as far as other summer program, I'm really not, I'm not really able to answer that more fully at this time.
Okay.
We have some things happening for teachers for professional development that we're developing, some Google work with Danielle.
Yeah, I was looking for student intervention type of things.
Right, so some of that relies on how we write the Title I grant and the funding we have for it, so that's considered in the grant, it's considered extended day services, even though you think of extended day before and after school, but it's outside of your regular school hours, is in, is the summer program, and I don't think we really earmarked a summer program in the grant.
No, because that, that was when, when the money got reduced this year, and that was the one thing that-
Right, so we can look at that again, when we write the grant in the fall, and see if, you know, a miracle happens and the state gives us more money, or we have any way to reapportion that money. Those grants are getting tighter and tighter. We are moving, though, to have a, a solid intervention program, you need to have targeted interventions, research-based targeted interventions in reading and math, and we're taking stock of the interventions that we're using now, and I have some samples on my desk in my office right now for some research-based mathematics interventions, and we have some supply funds in our grant that we're looking to use, so we are looking to improve the interventions that we're offering. We don't have the funding in the grant, though, to do summer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Questions, anyone? Thank you, Mrs. Colley. All right, at this time, we're looking at our subcommittee reports, and our academic subcommittee, you saw the results of some of that work today, and so we'll go to the finance, we were going to look at reconvening, so facilities.
Yeah, facility, that's me, that's me. We had a meeting recently, we don't generally have, we have them like every four months, and we discussed the different problems that we've been looking forward to taking care of, and one of the things was, the, the high school gym roof has been leaking for years, Rick has got a plan to take care of that problem, and we had one or two classrooms with water damage from this past winter, and insurance paid the loss, so that, all that repair work is just about all done. But the, one of the most interesting things was a proposal that we purchase a tractor to do our own plowing, and the way it works is, we can buy the correct color tractor, which is green, of course.
Well, are we just in discussion, because I don't want the town, or anybody hearing this, to think that that's where we're moving ahead, is this a discussion item?
It's a- So, yeah, so the discussion item is this, it'd be, we're, we looked into it, we, we reimburse, I guess, we pay the town to, to plow our, our parking lots.
We do, we have, yeah.
What we need to do, and I had a very quick conversation with town manager Carter, in the meeting last night, and to talk about, because their budget is set, and so is, well, for all practical purposes, so is ours. So what ramifications would it have, positive or negative, to utilize the money that we generally pay out of hand for that, to purchase a, a machine that we could then plow our own driveway? Carter, we had a, again, it was a good conversation, he needs to check on that, really what it boils down to is it advantageous, not only for the district, but is it also advantageous for the town? So, I mean, we, we need the, we need the machinery to do what we need to do around here, how we operate that in the wintertime, we want to make sure we, we have a discussion about, because I don't, we don't want to, because, again, you know, a budget is an agreement, so we have to make sure that we talk a little bit more further-
So it's really a beginning stage, discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Beginning stages.
It's a beginning stage, so you-
We know that we can do it, it's feasible, it's viable, we just need to make sure that all prices-
So again, we can't have people listening to this come in and say, you know, that this is happening, it's in the discussion stage, and we're looking for input from town managers and everything else.
Yeah, it's strictly discussion right now, yeah.
Just to make sure we understand that.
Yep.
Kate, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Because I know at one point, that was an important piece for the town of Templeton. So we have our policies, Mrs. Kozel?
We do, we have policies up for a second reading, I'm going to briefly go through all of them, and then ask for a motion to accept them. We have an update to JICH, which is our alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. Language has been added to address the verbal screening element, now that DESI has issued direct guidance on grade levels, and the legislature has alo- allocated some funds for the implementation within the Department of Health. New policy, GBEBD, online fundraising and solicitation, it's a policy to address online crowdfunding resources, such as GoFundMe and others, which could result in both tax implications and conflict, conflict of interest issues. New policy, ILD, student submission to educational surveys and research. This is a new policy to ensure district compliance with the protection of pupil rights amendment, PPR, also referred to as the HATCH amendment. This relates to the use of surveys and other instruments for gathering research data in education programs receiving federal funds, and I ask that those two be read, the new policies, because they were lengthy. Update, DGA, regional school district authorized signatures, update the policy to be consistent with the law, to only have the treasurer or the assistant treasurer authorized to sign checks, withdrawals, and bank forms. And the last update is for DJE, bidding requirements. Update policy to reference new bid law requirements, which states over $50,000 use competitive bidding. $10,000 to $50,000 requires attempt to secure three bids, and under $10,000 using sound business practices for purchasing. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, I would accept the call, the policies for a second reading.
Second. Any discussion? Just on this last one with the sound business practices for $10,000, that state law has gone up to that as well. gone up to that as well? That's an important thing. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And now we have new policies for first reading. New is JV, equal educational opportunities, statement on equal education opportunities for all students. JC, attendance areas, statement on attendance areas for students in each town and the district. JCA, the assignment of students to schools, policy on how students are assigned to schools within the district. JF, school admissions, policy on school admissions replaces JFA admissions procedures, which contains procedural information. JFA admissions procedures replaced by JF, school admissions. JFABC, admission of transfer students, policy on transfer student placement and eligibility for graduation, and the last, student absences and excuses, policy statement on absences and excuses, student absence notification program, and drop-out prevention. And those policies can be looked at completely online at once. So I would just like a motion that we look at those as a first reading, and then if you have any questions.
Do I have a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Do you have a, a question? And I want to say that we are changing our policy meeting time on the 7th to 3:00 PM and not 4:00. Susan? Thank you.
I think we need to go back to facilities. Do we need to go back to facilities?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to, uh, just point out, uh, that we have, in your PAC, I think it splits it into F3, the capital budget, pardon me, uh, the capital budget request form, so what we're, what we've identified are some of our major needs. In the district, that's important for the capital planning, obviously. The one thing that I want to, I want to highlight, because it's something that probably hasn't been discussed for a while, but, um, the resurface of the outdoor track and the base coat of the track, um, we, we had some folks come out and take a look at that, the track is, is in pretty poor repair, I mean, the, the chunks of, I believe it's asphalt, but are literally just coming out. So, we're going to need to look at that at some point, um, so we have put it on the capital budget request, we are just awaiting quotes, we're trying to get a sense of what, you know, what will cost, et cetera. Um, but there's more to come on that, but I, I just want to make sure I highlighted it because it, it's a new, it's a new addition, uh, to the capital budget request form. Have you seen it?
No.
Yeah, as far as a new.
So the town of Templeton has a capital long-term planning committee?
Yeah.
That I went to in the early fall. So is this, um, sheet something that can be shared with them?
Yes. We, we certainly need.
Because that's what they were looking for.
Exactly, yes. This is, again, they, they have the original, like, the roof has been on it for a bit, so that.
Right, but they needed.
But this is, this is a new item that we've identified as, you know, being, when I say fairly urgent, you know, in the relatively near future, and we need to add that kind of to the list.
Okay, they didn't have a list at that time, I'm sure you've updated them, but, um, that's what they're looking for, so that will help. Thank you. All right, and policies are all set. That's long-term planning, it's a, anything else on long-term planning?
No, uh, we're going to meet, um, June, June, yeah, first month.
Thank you, that'll be posted. Um, Mr. Mason, the Templeton Elementary School?
It's going extremely well. The foundation's almost all in, and everything's functional.
Nice. Thank you. Um, the PMS Building Committee?
We had a, a meeting last weekend, uh, we had the fire chief in discussing some of the safety issues and, from his opinion. We don't have another meeting now until June, but, uh, we do have a couple of warrant articles, uh, all written up and ready for the town meeting. That's about where we stand.
Thank you. Uh, we have no correspondence, so at this time, I'd like to take a vote to go into executive session, and we will return into open session immediately following, so that we will return to open. We're going into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Again, we will return into open session. This is a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Mason?
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robeson?
Aye.
Mrs. Colson?
Aye.
Mrs. Hughes?
Aye.
And aye. Thank you, guys, make it easy at the end.
All right, so we'll take a five-minute break and then reconvene for executive session. Thank you all. Okay. Okay, we have reconvened regular session.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that the, uh, school committee approve the memorandum of agreement for the Narragansett Regional District, uh, School District, and the NDEA agree to the following changes to the educator evaluation system as located in Appendix C of the current negotiated agreement between the Narragansett Regional School District and the Narragansett District Education Association. Uh, the agreement states changes to the rubric section, Bullet A is located on page 44, uh, and the rubrics address, I'm not going to read out because they're all web addresses, um, but copies will be available if anyone's interested, but it pertains to the teachers, the rubric provided by the DESI. Counselors, specialized instructional support personnel, rubric provided by DESI. Nurses, specialized instructional support personnel, rubric provided by DESI in conjunction with the Mass School Nurse Organization. The physical occupational therapists, the specialized instructional support personnel, rubric provided by DESI in conjunction with the Massachusetts Association for Occupational Therapy. And the speech-language pathologists, the specialized instructional support personnel, rubric provided by DESI in conjunction with the Mass Speech-Language Hearing Association.
And you have one more?
Oops, I'm sorry. And the BCBA's, the specialized instructional support personnel, rubric provided by DESI in conjunction with the Massachusetts School Psychologist Association.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye. Mrs. Matson? Mrs. Robeson?
Aye.
Mrs. Colson?
Aye.
Mrs. Hughes?
Aye.
Mrs. Chud, Mrs. Sandin, and Mrs. Tripoloson?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, will you adjourn?
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Arrgh!